Hearing none, move on. Approval minutes, October 16, 2017, regular session.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
October 18, 2017, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
October 18, 2017, executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, make a motion to approve the warrants as posted in the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, we can't do the, uh...
Should we have the solid waste advisory team?
Sure.
Come on up.
You want...
Go home early, Senator. And you get to go home early. Yay!
Just introduce yourself.
Stay for the whole evening.
Sure, yeah.
You have to take notes, though, and tell us how we did.
Okay. Um, thanks, Elise. So, good evening. Because SWAT was formed in 2000...
Can you just introduce yourselves for TV?
Uh, Juliandere Rivera.
Lisa Wellington, solid waste advisory team.
Thank you.
Because SWAT was formed in 2007 by the Board of Selectmen and Pay As You Throw was started in 2009, we thought it would be a good time to review. Pay As You Throw has fostered a substantial reduction in trash, 29 percent, um, from 1,970 tons to 1,407 tons, and also decreased the net cost of trash by 41 percent, from 395,492 to 232,444. There's been a substantial increase in recycling rates over this, um, past eight years, from 21 percent to 32 percent. And we have, I hope you guys got the spreadsheets. Did we get those about?
There's some, yeah.
Okay. So, you know, there's detailed information there. The interesting thing to note is that over the past eight years since we've had Pay As You Throw, all those changes happened in the first year. Since then, the last seven years, they've been stable. Little blips here and there, like we like to sound positive at the town meeting, like, but really, um, that, in addition to the fact that we, um, expect increases in our cost of disposal, and actually, we know from our collector that there might be charging a cost for disposing of recyclables. That cost would be less than the disposal cost for trash, though, but this is something they're considering. Um, we also know that the landfill Casella is closing in December, um, and that our contract's gonna be up in three years, so we wanted to start the conversation about how we can intervene to decrease our costs. We, um, have been using, you know, some information we have is from the DEP website from Irene Coggan, and there's two things that stand out on that website. Um, number one is there are towns in Massachusetts that have a recycling rate better than ours, which is like, okay, 52 percent. In Chutesbury and North Attleboro, we're hovering around 30, 32 percent. And the other thing that, that jumped out at me was, um, this quote that she said, "No town without Pay As You Throw can get a recycling rate above 40 percent." But 55 percent of all towns that have Pay As You Throw did achieve a recycling rate greater than 40 percent.
And ours is 32 percent.
Yeah. So we, we couldn't find data, because one of our suggestions, and of course, we're biased, is that we increase our bag fee, but to note that we're, of 147 communities in Massachusetts, West Boylston and five or six other towns have the lowest rate.
Of all the 147 Pay As You Throw towns in the state, we have the lowest rate. Nobody has lower bag fees than we do.
Right.
Can I just ask you a question? Do those towns also fund it in the budget by an override?
I, that, we don't, DEP doesn't have that. They're way...
That's, that's why our bag fees, 'cause there's been an override to cover trash. And all the bag fees supposed to cover is the difference between what was voted on for the override and the, the cost of today. So, that's probably why we're the lowest, I would say, lowest bag fee.
It could be.
Um, is that correct? I mean, that's, we're all, we, we had an override vote, so that's still part of our budget.
It is still built into the budget.
Yeah.
But it does not have to go to the trash budget. It did the first year, but not after that.
It would have to have an underwrite and give the money...
No. Technically, what happens with an override is that you identify the purpose of it the first year. Technically, Elise, you're correct, that after, that, after that first year, that is money that's just built into general revenues that we can use for any portion of the budget, but typically, a community has a gentleman's agreement, so to speak, that, you know, that portion of the override moving forward would, would be used for the same purpose, unless it's determined that there's some other overriding need that those monies need to be assigned to. So, I've been here 18 months, I'm not, I'm not sure what the discussion was at the time, but the decision was made.
Well, I, I mean, I was here, and we wanted to keep that money going, just like the voters voted, and not say, "Okay, now we're gonna spend it after one year, we're gonna spend it any way we want." That's not fair to the voters and to the residents of the town, I don't think.
So, um, that's, you know, a consideration, and, um, the, the other sort of interesting piece of information is that John Westerling had mentioned when he was our DPW a number of years ago, that he sort of calculated that the cost of the town to dispose of an average bag of trash was $2.20. So, um, the other thing to know is that there are towns that have bag fees that range up to $5. So we're, you know, really at the low end, for whatever reason, but just saying it's...
For that reason. That's not, it's not for whatever reason, it's for that reason.
Yeah. And so, um, you know, again, we're biased, and we think that, you know, um, this is a user fee, not a tax, is our sort of mantra, just like you have other user fees for electricity and water and, um, so, you know, we've got this spreadsheet that, um, Butch had calculated the savings to the town by different bag fee costs, so going from $50 to $1, to $75 and $1.50, or $1 and $2. You know, you're decreasing your net cost of trash substantially, so from a $200-something to $1.50-something to $74,000. So it's a huge, you know, decrease, um, in the cost to the town, so it's a big savings. And so those numbers you see on options one and two on your spreadsheet.
Excuse me one second, Anita. I would, I don't know if that's here, but I would like to know what currently that override is worth today, with the two and a half added every year since we've had it, and what trash actually costs, and see what the difference, this is what I'd like to see, what we need to make up.
Yep. We do have...
If we have to go up 10 cents on the bag to make up that, but I don't think we have to go to $3 or $4, just to make up the difference.
No. That wasn't our option. Our option was $75 and $1.50.
I know, but just to make up the difference as well.
Yeah, well, we can definitely develop that number for the next selectments meeting, but I believe you do have information built into these spreadsheets as to what it costs today, correct? Right. So we do have that number here tonight, but I will have to develop that current day value of the override number for you for the next meeting.
Is there any data in there, so when the cost of bags go up, people use them less?
Yeah, it's hard to get that data. You know, we were talking with Irene, and she, she gave us like these, like, really big spreadsheets, and we're like, hm. So, I tried to Xerox off one, so it's hard to find that answer, but globally speaking, yes, the Pay As You Throw idea decreases trash tonnage and increases recycling, but there's so many factors that are involved in that, like econo, you know, the people's economic, financial, you know, status and et cetera. So, um, the one...
We're, we're actually doing well on having a fairly low tonnage per household when you compare us to other towns. I can't say that our recycling rate of 32 percent is anything to brag about.
Right.
So, on the one, but as Julianne just intimated, the amount of trash you get per household is dependent on not just the bag fee, which encourages you to lower, and there are statistics showing that it goes down substantially with Pay As You Throw, but a, a community's affluence also affects that, because a very wealthy community, people buy a lot more stuff, and they throw out a lot more stuff. So there are other factors in, but the state's goal now is to reduce the amount of trash per household, and we are doing a good job on that. You know, I can't say it's all due to Pay As You Throw, but a lot of it is.
And because part of it is diversion of waste, you know, the composting, you know, idea of putting textiles, our recycling center in town, all those things, and, you know, so our, we're not, you know, we're also looking to educate town people on how to reduce, reuse, and recycle, and to that end, we're, um, you know, looking to work with the high school students on making videos on how to recycle, 'cause a lot of people don't really understand still, you know, how, where things go, and to sort of go into people's homes and, you know, take pictures of how they're doing things and be educating them, and have other, working with the schools to adopt a green team, writing articles for the item, and stuff like that. So there's a lot of information on this website, if you're interested too, from, you know, the official website of the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Energy and Environmental Affairs, they have lots of different spreadsheets from other towns and information there.
You had mentioned that we may have to start paying for recycling. I know we were also talking about having to go from single stream back to...
Yep, double stream.
The, the double stream recycling.
Yep.
Is, are those things mutually exclusive? If we, even if we go...
Right.
To the double stream recycling, there still might be a cost associated with picking that up?
Yep. Um, that's our understanding.
Yeah.
Um, it's more like what the contamination rate is gonna be affected by the single stream versus double stream, so the money we get back would be less with contamination rates.
I mean, there've just been articles in the Wall Street Journal how China, which is a major buyer of our waste, is putting a ban on plastic, starting in the new year, and wastepaper will have to meet a much more stringent contamination level, 0.3 percent. And, um, that includes things like staples.
Glue.
They're getting very tight, and they don't want to be our biggest customer of waste anymore. Also, the metal scrap, they expect, including aluminum, and that's aluminum cans, soda cans, um, will likely face this 3 percent contaminant ban next year. So, the market for recyclables is going down, it's not good, and that will affect our contract when it comes up for removal.
And it's interesting that 40 percent of our paper waste goes to China right now.
Wow.
Amazing.
So it's gonna be a, a lot of education.
Forty percent of our discarded plastic goes to China.
And plastic, too.
Uh, and two-thirds of America's wastepaper goes to China now.
Oh, you're right, Elise, sorry.
I, our, our waste exports to China total more than 2.2 billion now. That's more than our exports to China of wheat, rice, corn, meat, dairy, and vegetables combined. It's huge. So when that market...
Closes.
Closes, or gets much more stringent.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a problem, probably with single stream, to meet those standards.
Are, can I ask, are you proposing an increased rate of bag fees?
Well, we, we, I think we gave you two options that we've looked into on our committee.
So, to my understanding is, the total program cost, at this time, bag fee of small bag fee, small bag is 50 cents, and the large bag is $1. The total net program cost is $233,000 for the town. Whereas, if we increase the bag fee to 0.75 cents for the small bags, $1.50 for the larger bags, again, for the town, the net program cost is $149,000. Whereas, if we increase the small bag from 50 cents to a dollar, and the larger bags from $1 to $2, still, the net program cost for the town is $74,000. My question is, is there a reason why we need to increase the program cost? Or, also, you know, if we increase the bag fee, do you think that will encourage the, encourage for more recycling?
Well, I thi, I think it certainly will give people stronger incentive to recycle, and it will cer, certainly reward the people who do recycle more than they're being rewarded today. But I don't think we can promise that, I mean, it's just like when the Board of Selectmen seven years ago switched from dual stream to single stream, and I voted in favor of it, our committee.
Oh, you didn't, though.
Yeah, I know. But I thought it would make recycling easier for everybody, and our recycling would increase. It didn't increase at all. It's remained exactly the same. So I don't like to promise, you know, great results, when I've seen that promise before and it didn't occur, but I certainly think it would reward people and give them to recycle, and it would give people more of an incentive to recycle.
One of the things about the numbers that Raj just read, you're talking about the cost of the town. Cost of the town stays the same. It's just a matter of am I paying out of my fee pocket, or am I paying it out of my tax pocket? The taxpayers, anybody that itemizes their deductions, when you pay it out of your fee pocket, you don't get to deduct that. It actually hurts your, your, as a taxpayer, whether you recycle or you don't, it's gonna hurt your bottom line to have higher bag fees than to pay them through your ta, the tax base. So that's something, you know, just, so everybody understands, it's not like these costs just go away, they're just not being paid out of the town budget.
Well, I think they're hoping that recycling would go up if you raised the bag fees, there'd be more recycling, which would possibly lower the cost.
Right, to your family.
No, no, though, they might, you might not.
And if you lower your trash tonnage, that also reduces your costs.
But I don't know, but I don't know how we can lower the, oh, trash, but we'll have more...
Yeah, if people recycle more than trash...
We don't know, under the new contract, we might be paying...
Bring it to the recycling center, then your trash tonnage goes down, and we're paying, what, $60.37 per ton of trash?
You know, what I think is, you know, personally, even if you increase this to 50 cents to $50, then it will make a difference, but if it...
Well, we're not gonna...
50 cents to your dollar...
Do you wanna be reelected?
50 cents to your dollar, it may hurt me if I go to the honey farms, buy a bag. Instead of $5, I may be paying $10. After that, when I take it home and I put it there, so, there should be a, some other way you could educate that, you know, uh, how educate and promote the recycling.
Well, you know, I just feel, you know, there's a limit to education, because, you know, as a physician, I can educate people how bad smoking is and drinking is, and they still do it, you know, at great cost to them. So there's a limit to educating people, too.
There's really no, there's really no big education. If you got a plastic, you put it in the recycling, not in the rubbish.
Right.
I mean, it's as simple as that. I know there's some fine lines, but if people aren't gonna do it...
Yeah.
They're just not gonna do it. I don't, I don't think they're gonna do it if the bag's a dollar. They might just throw it in rubbish, so, I mean...
But at least they'll pay a higher penalty...
Yeah, but, you know, again, the only way I could even...
Our incentives are very low.
Yeah, I can consider talking about this until I get the numbers that, to see, I'm, I'm strong on what was voted on by the town people was an override, I think one of our only overrides, and it was for trash. So what that's worth today, what it actually costs today, and see if what we take in for 50 cents and a dollar covers that. Um, and then we have to figure out if they're gonna start charging us, you're saying they might start charging for the recycling?
Mm-hmm.
You know, well, that's, that's a whole nother story, so...
Mr.... When will you find out if they're gonna start charging us on the recycling?
We'll have to meet with them, we'll have to ask them, 'cause that would lead...
I think we have a contract, and it ends in 2020, but you'll wanna start negotiating it before it ends. So it's like two years.
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same question, and I think one of the ways we can find out information a little bit early is to reach out to other communities whose contracts are up for renegotiation now...
That's true.
And see what feedback they're getting from their vendors now in terms of how prices might increase. It won't give us a firm number in terms of how ours will be affected three years from now, but at least it will give us a better sense.
Right. All we know is what the representative, our trash collector told us...
Right.
About a year ago.
Right.
Or was it six?
Yeah, it was another year. Well, yeah, within the past year.
Yeah.
Well, this is negotiation, we can get bids from three, four different companies. It doesn't mean just because...
You know, actually, most of the things you're not required to get bid on, for sure, but it's one of the best things to do, because it ensures you get the best out of your service.
Yeah, we would urge, and we did urge, that the last contract renewal of the town put it out to begin.
We certainly will.
So just looking at this paper that you passed out, the first one says program cost?
That's...
No. The first one says total, I guess Butch, the first one says total program cost, $3.79. That's what we currently pay for trash?
Total program cost, yep.
I'm just looking at one line, total program cost.
Right. That's W.
16, we paid $3.79.
For the, for 20.
Total, we've taken in with the bags, $136,000?
Yep.
So the net was $2.42.
Right.
And then what's the...
That's for the year program cost.
$2,016.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's...
This is for year 2006.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to understand the breakdown.
This is 2017, east on the other column.
Yeah, so it's $1.49, okay.
Yeah.
I, I can't recall when we did it a few years ago, what the, what that money's worth today, but we can figure that out. It's easy enough.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Elise.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good work. Thank you. And Anita has all the chart from DEP. I refer the two today of what other towns are charging.
All right, thank you so much.
So, if you wanna look at it.
All right, public hearing in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, poll petition we press from Verizon. Does anyone wanna read it?
Okay. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Spoylston will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November 1, November 1, 2017, at 7:15 PM, on the petition of Verizon to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public ways. Relocate pole number T5 on the River Road, and add a pole number T5 and a half on the River Road. The public hearing will be held in the selectments' meeting room of the Town Hall, 140 Uster Street, West Boylston. John Hadley, chairman.
Thank you, Raj. One, please introduce yourself, please.
Good evening. My name's Bill Wallace, representing Verizon on this petition, poll petition. The petition is for two poles, one to be relocated, which is pole five, and to add a new pole, five and a half. Verizon would like to upgrade the pole line on River Road going in towards the Quabon area there, and also to improve the clearances over the pole, over the road, because from pole five to pole six, it's a pretty long span, and that wire is pretty low there, so they'd like to increase that, you know, that, that clearance as well.
Any question?
Yeah. Um, Butch, you had mentioned, um, gas lines underneath, and something about DigSafe. I left my agenda with all this stuff at work. Um, I just wanna make sure that Verizon is aware of the DigSafe markings and all that?
Yes, it's all marked out out there.
Yeah, they'd have to actually call their own inventory department. Right. Any questions in the board? Anything from the public?
A motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, make your motion.
I'll make a motion to approve moving the one pole and citing the new pole.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. Transportation Committee, discuss product requirement, Board's approval for TPI list, DIP list. Hello. How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Good.
Is everybody here?
Is everybody here? Is anybody else coming?
No, we have, Larry is representing the Transportation Committee, and Butch is part of the committee as well.
This is my first televised selectment...
Well, make sure you smile.
Yeah. Yeah, um, you know, I've been a, a little bit away from Transportation Committee for a while, but we've come back and we've, um, you know, looked at a new project. This year, what we did is, we were looking, it was continuation of something that we did back in, um, 2011. I think Chris remembers, uh, what we did is with, um, it was with the DPW, DOT, Transportation Committee, Chief Minnick, and I believe the Fire Department, too. We looked at the intersection of Route 12 and 140 with Church Street and everything going in. There were a lot of problems at the time, and what we did is we, we tackled all the low hanging fruit that we could on the project at that time. We put in cans on the, um, on the, on the lights, so there was less confusion from different directions and everything, and, um, we also looked at the 140 corridor, and we, uh, you know, looked at, um, you know, signs, consolidations of signs, and, um, you know, things like that. We got that all fixed up. So now we, we looked at crash data, you know, now being 2017, and we're seeing that the intersection there, and also, um, was it Route 12 and Franklin Street, are the highest people that are, are the highest intersections that are, have crash data. You can see on, on the back of, uh, page eight, if you count the cover, um, you can see the two, the two highest guys are Church Street, Central Street, and Temple, which is 140, and Route 12, and also Franklin Street, which Franklin Street has a lot of problems with grading, uh, you know, solar glare in the morning, there's a lot of stuff there that's going on. So we concentrated on those two intersections to look at, and possibly the third one being right here. So, um, you know, that, with CMRPC, Rich Rider helped us out, and we, you know, we looked at it, we voted, uh, to do the tip for that, and that's what we're recommending tonight.
Is it just one or three? All, all combined, one tip, right? All three projects combined, one tip?
Yeah.
If you look at tab three in the pack, that shows you the map that identifies the two highest crash locations.
Tab three?
The data was all pulled together by CMRPC on behalf of the town. They had a grant using federal and state funds to do this study for the area towns, and...
So the, oh, I'm sorry, the backside of page nine, she's referring to.
Tab three.
Right before, the overview of central Mass.
Yeah. Yep. That's a visual. Tab two is the actual chart that gives the actual crash data. Looks like that.
And you can see the majority of the accidents are during the daylight. And, you know, we spoke with Chief Minnick, too, and, you know, he concurs that these are the two most popular intersections that have accidents in, in town.
And what will we do to, to resolve them? We'll go and ask for...
So if, if the board agrees tonight to move these forward to try to get them on the TIP list, the next step would be, we would meet with Mass DOT to try to work with them to identify what the best resolution is to the, to, you know, intersection improvements. Typically, in a TIP, TIP project, the town would... Typically, in a tip, tip project, the town would be responsible for the engineering of the work, and then the state would pay for the actual construction. But because this involves Route 12, we're hoping that Mass DOT will agree to share some of those engineering expenses with the town, but we won't know that until we have formal conversation with them. And, you know, I'm sure that they'll be using their expertise of what they've seen in other communities with similar intersection layouts to advise what the best redesign might be. You know, there's so many different options on the table. We, you know, we're having a conversation with Rich Rider from CMRPC in terms of, you know, so many communities are using rotaries now, and, you know, there's, a lot of people hate the rotary concept, so it's really, it's actually going to be very interesting when we start to talk to Mass DOT District Three office to see what they're suggesting that intersection improvements should be for those two locations.
That Route 12 and 140? I can't imagine there's near enough land without taking down buildings.
Did you see the one they put off, exit five and Sterling?
Is it that small?
It's, no, it's amazing.
Yeah, they're huge areas, though.
Can't believe how big the area takes up.
We have buildings probably, you know, five, 10 feet away from the street.
So the funds for engineering comes out of chapter 90?
If we don't. If Mass DOT does not agree to do the engineering for us, we would be looking to do chapter 90 funds for the engineering cost.
Is it a rough idea?
Excuse me?
Rough idea of the cost?
When we spoke to Rich Rider, he said that he was guesstimating that the, these two projects would total, I think he's setting the $3 million range, and you typically figure for road construction project engineering is about 10%, eight to 10%, so 300,000.
And also, again, this is not going to be a one-year project, right?
No, it would be, it would be a multiple year.
Five, six, seven years it may go.
But what we're looking to do is to try to get this in the pipeline, so to speak, so that it, you know, there's a current five-year tip list right now, which will end in '22, and it's going to take several years for any project that we propose to get on that next tip list, which starts in '23.
Were we on the last one?
None.
Do we have anything on the last one?
No.
Sure.
So to clarify, this wouldn't even start to happen until 2023 because the funds have already been spent elsewhere.
Yes, the monies are already allocated for the next few years up through '22.
So then we have a few years to prepare for it and have a better idea. Do we have any idea of any recommendations at this point, what they're thinking of doing?
No. Rich Rider goes on our behalf, has already had a brief conversation with Mass DOT to let them know that you were discussing this tonight, and assuming that you approve moving ahead with this concept, will schedule a meeting with Mass DOT and actually start to have some conversation about what might they suggest. Okay, thank you. Obviously, we'll be bringing back all the information to the board. The next Transportation Committee meeting is December 7.
Right.
Thank you.
Do we foresee any issues? I don't know who could field this question, because we don't own the road, that we're proposing, I know we're asking, all right, will DOT pay for this, but we don't own the road, what if they say, no, we don't want to do anything? Can they stop this project if they deem that it doesn't, it's not necessary, or how does that work?
They could delay it. I think we have enough justification in terms of the crash data that we're showing to show that it's a significant need in the corridor. So I don't think it would be a case of them saying that they refuse to do it. I think it's more a case of they can, if they say, yes, we create things to be done, but you're going to pay for the engineering. But I'm hoping maybe we find someplace in between there where they'll help us with this.
So before we spend any money on engineering, they tell us they're going to do the project?
Some communities go ahead and start doing the engineering and then hoping that that will create a more favorable impression with Mass DOT. For something like this, we would recommend that we not do anything until we get Mass DOT to say, yes, we'll support this project.
I agree.
And what helps, too, is we have been, you know, it is documented that we've been talking about this intersection for quite a while now, and, you know, I believe part one was, you know, they came out, they looked at it, they've assessed it, you know, back in 2011, so they know it's on our radar screen.
Well, we need to get on this list to have any chance.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought we were on, but it's not.
Any motion?
So the motion would be to submit this to, submit it to the Mass DOT or to the...
For consideration.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Larry.
Good work.
So, okay.
We also have Butch Jackson here to talk about the culvert repair.
Hey, you want to go first? Yeah. Get a hole in the ground.
So Monday I got a call, we had a seahole at King's Mountain Road. Anybody go look at it? It's, it's, I've got pictures, but it's huge. It's a, it's actually a five-foot culvert that has collapsed, and so I've been scrambling to get prices. I've got four contractors that have come out yesterday and today to give us prices on this. I've only gotten one back for 120,000. I don't know, that's just, I told them, give me your worst case, because I had to come tonight, and I wanted to get a chapter 90 form in progress, because we want to get this fixed as quick as we can. But that's the only feedback I have, so I really don't know what it's going to cost. It won't be more than that, but it could be up to that. It's a five-foot pipe, we have to divert the stream on both sides, we have to pump across in order to make it a dry area to work in. It's way too big for something for the DPW to do.
How big's the culvert?
Five feet.
Wow.
A five-foot pipe. So it's a big one. It's a, it's a major stream. It's a, it's a good 10-foot stream. When we were there Monday, it was a 10-foot stream, and because it had been raining, it was like a river. It was, it was, now it's gotten down to more of a stream, but when that thing's flowing, it's a, it's a major tributary to the, to the reservoir. And I checked with the DCR trying to get them to...
I was going to say that.
Yeah, no, I did. I called right away to see if it was theirs and if they would do it, but they...
And they didn't take your card?
No, they, they gave me the handoff, and it was all ours. So, all they want from me is a letter just stating what we did and when we did it, and that was it. They really had no interest.
They made the letter, what the money?
Yeah, that's what I was kind of hoping for, but... So tonight, I'm just looking for a...
So you got to dig it, they got to dig it out, put a five-foot pipe back in?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do the head walls through while we're there because it needs it, so there's no sense just doing the pipe and leaving the head walls old and beat up, so it was all one shot.
Collapsed because it was old, or...
Yeah, it was, I mean, you can't even see the pipe, there's so much debris on top of it. There's a good four-foot hole, all the debris's gone down through and flushed down the river, but you can't even see the pipe. You just see the very edge, in fact, you can see in the picture, you can see the very edge of the pipe on the, but all the rain probably contributed to it, and Anita said we had an email today from MEMA requesting any damage figures that we've gotten with the rain we've had in the last two weeks, so it's possible we may get some assistance from them.
So if it's a declaration, if it becomes a declaration, we get 75% back, right?
We, yeah. So we don't know yet whether or not the... Come on.
I bet you some areas will consider this power, and so they may have hired crews from up side.
The state would have to declare it as...
State needs to declare it, and then what they do is they, they're already actually sending out the forms to all communities in anticipation that it might be declared. So that was, I sent an email to Tom Walsh and to Butch saying, you know, let's start pulling together facts and figures now so we'll be ready.
The area has hit 7.5 million in, in whatever the storm area was. I believe the number's 7.5 million before the state will declare it. If it's just the state, we get 50. If it becomes a federal, we get 75. Is that right? Sound right?
To be honest, I'm not sure what the state number is.
I know if it's a federal, federally declared, we end up getting 75% of the cost back.
7.5 million, we had 20,000 people in town, so there shouldn't be that much.
Right, that's why it should.
All right.
Can you fix it? The DPW can fix it?
No.
Five-foot, I mean, it's huge, yeah.
I don't see we have much of a choice.
No, I don't.
But what's the balance in the...
Well, with this, with my, the last sheet I got from the, from Michael Harrow will have like 57,000 left.
After this.
After this.
After the 120?
Yes.
After we take our 120.
That includes the street paving, includes Newton Street.
Everything, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the repairs on King's Mountain, come out of chapter 90, not to exceed $120,000.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, well, just, you know, when we had 700,000 or 500,000, we're going, let's spend it. Now we'll have 50-something thousand dollars in it, so the next time there's an issue like this, we're...
Well, we've, we've caught up with most of the roads. Next year, I'm actually looking for roads. I'm not really, nothing's poked out at me, and nothing's really, nobody's calling me about their roads so bad, so now it's a matter, we can pick and choose and slow down a little bit.
Well, we think we have it.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Butch. All right, public hearing for the communication. Raj?
Public notice is hereby given in conformity with the requirement of general bylaw of the Town Office Boilston, Article 23, public, Article 23. Public hearing and notice that the Board of Selectment will meet on Wednesday, November 1, 2017, at 7:30 PM for the purpose of considering amending policy L18, beautification of town squares and islands. The meeting will be held in the meeting room number one of the municipal office building, 140 Uster Street, West Boilston.
Thank you.
I just, this says Article 23, and the agenda says Article 24. Does it matter which one's correct?
Mine's a different.
I mean, if it doesn't matter, I don't...
What did you say?
The agenda should say 23.
Okay, that's fine then. Yeah, that's fine.
So everybody remembers, this is for Lost Oak Road, so they can, they wanted, the residents want to take care of the island at the end of their road, and they, we're looking for the town, so that's why we're going to add this, if everybody's okay with it. So any discussion on the board?
Just for adding one more island, right?
Yes.
Now, this is going to be outside of the scope of the lottery, and this is going to be assigned to that group of people, or how's that going to work?
It would be included in the list that the lottery gets, uses, the lottery process for assignment.
Oh, that would be pretty tough for a business to get Lost Oak Road.
That would, that would be tough.
Yeah, nobody would, nobody would, under our rules, once you pull your hat, you have to take the one, but if we give them a dead-end street, I mean, they're going to be pretty upset. So I don't know if we should, this should be in the lottery.
Can we, I mean, can we, there's, there's no reason why we couldn't amend it to say Lost Oak Road Island will be awarded to a resident of Lost Oak Road.
Yeah.
You'd have the ability to amend the policy tonight to do that.
Good. That's a good idea.
What if no one comes for it?
Then it just doesn't get done. In the future, he's saying, if no one, if no one asks to do it, then it just doesn't get done.
We can visit the policy again to see if any business wants their stuff on a dead-end road.
I'm just curious why it even, can't it be outside of this? I mean, this, this policy is for the lottery, the whole system of advertising, how to put the signs, what you can do and what you can't do. Why, if just some residents want to do an intersection, should it be in this policy?
It doesn't have to be. That's, tonight, this is consideration for you as to whether or not you want to include it in this policy formally. The way the policy is established, all of the existing 10 locations clearly are referred to the lottery process being used. So, you know, if you decide that the lottery process would not be appropriate for this particular location, you have a choice. Don't bother to amend the policy, leave it as it is, and just have an agreement with the residents in that area that if they want to beautify that island, they can. Or you could amend the policy in such a way that Lost Oak Road Circle is separate from the lottery process. You could add language that says, and in addition, outside of lottery process, this particular island would be available to area residents.
Well, I think it's great if the people of Lost Oak Road have volunteered to do this, you know, they came forward, they wanted to do it, so I think we should accept, accept it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have no problem with it not being in the policy, but just making an agreement with them on what they can do. Because really, in reality, on Lost Oak Road, if the bushes are over, we have a rule that's over so many inches, I mean, would it really, that's all for public safety. I don't think that's an issue over here, so, I mean, I think, I don't know, Butch can just talk to those folks?
What would be easier from a logistics standpoint, to just have an agreement?
Why don't you try for this next year, just to do it by agreement with the residents in the area, see how that goes, then give reconsideration for the next spring.
I think that's, I agree with that.
All right, is there anything from the public?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All right.
We're not going to, I guess we're not going to act on it then from here.
We're going to ask them to just make an agreement with DBW director?
I'll have Butch reach out.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next public hearing, I would like...
Yeah, I just have to pass over that for right now.
Yeah.
Oh, now, do we have to, since this was set as a public hearing, do we have to open it and continue the public hearing, or just...
Opening and, open and continue.
Just...
Is this something that you feel you'd be ready to discuss at the next meeting? You could do a continuation.
I personally won't at the next meeting.
We, we have to have a meeting of the development first.
So since it, should we open it and then just, we'd have to...
Continue it?
Like a couple meetings from now?
Could do the first meeting in December, postpone till that date.
Why don't you read the copy, now, Sam?
Public notice is hereby given in conformity with the requirement of general bylaw of the Town Office Boilston, Article 23. Public hearing and notice that the Board of Selectment will meet on Wednesday, November 1, 2017, at 7:35 PM for the purpose of conserving amendments to the policy, L15, policy for gateway sign. The meeting will be held in Selectment Meetings Room of the Town Hall, 140 Uster Street, West Boilston.
So now should we make a motion to continue it?
To a date certain.
So, so first in December or the second?
Was it first, uh...
You know, the next...
What are we looking for?
Anyone have an iPhone?
Yeah.
On our, it's going to be the fourth, but let me verify.
Fourth is a Monday.
It's the...
Sixth.
So it's the sixth or the 20th?
It's the sixth, we're meeting that Monday before then.
So I'll make a motion to continue this public hearing until December 6.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sounds easy.
Thank you. All right. You want to do a town video now, or? This is the town video that we've been working on for quite a while. Maybe everybody's going to like it.
All right, is this... You may have to help me with this, I haven't used it.
It'll go on, just, I don't know if it's set, though. I think you might have to, the front might have to go up a little.
Oh, no. It's saying it needs to be formatted. Yeah, it doesn't like my thumb drive. Can you plug USBs directly into the projector? I don't know. Nancy says that she has it on this thumb drive here. Oh, you do also? I do. The recent ones? Yes.
Is it connected online?
Send them to me.
Is it, is the computer sound wireless?
I sent you the link. Oh, okay.
I got it here, but it's on...
This is connected to the internet? I can play them on? I believe so. Okay. But if this is connected to internet, then I can take care of that.
Uh...
Has an X through the, uh...
What's that?
Doesn't look as though it's connected.
I'm having very, I don't know, it could be something wrong with the guest connection because I'm having a hard time noting anything.
Let me see if I can, um...
Like it...
No, I can't.
Is the email, the one you sent on the email, the tar one?
The most recent one? Did you forward the most recent one?
No.
Yeah.
I can forward it to you right now, but that won't help.
Mike, I'm just uploading my emails, then, oh, now I just got it, so. You're saying the most recent one?
Yeah.
It's not the one that we, um...
No, I added some audio. What are the ads? That won't work.
Um, we're working on that, want to go to new business and see if we can get that working.
What's that?
We're going to go on some other...
Oh, yeah, 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 go right ahead. I'll see if I can get this connected.
You want to start with the, are you action items for Board of Selectmen's goals? Want to do that, Anita?
Sure, so at the last meeting, we had talked about bringing this back to the table tonight so that the board could start talking about specific action items for some of the goals you had agreed for this, this year. And the two you had talked about trying to move forward were, was the goal for town beautification, which was the second goal, which is page two of the packet you have in front of you tonight. And the other item was the citizen survey. So if we, only first on the town beautification, in the goals that you approved moving ahead with, we had some possible action items that were identified. And I'll just briefly read those out and then we can discuss them in more detail. Those action steps were to develop a blight bylaw which addresses privately owned structures that prohibit any business or residence from presenting an ISO that drastically impacts of the property in the area. Item two was to identify existing town buildings or structure that need repair or upgrading and address those conditions. For example, the recent exterior improvements that we've begun making at the DPW. Item three was to reestablish an annual townwide roadside cleanup day in conjunction with DPW, solid waste advisory team, DCR, Board of Health, et cetera, aiming for trying to have that be reestablished for Earth Day 2018. Item four was to establish regular roadside trash cleanup using Worcester County House of Correction work crews scheduled through DPW to begin this fall. Item five was to do a street sign replacement program through DPW with planning to have a list ready for January 1st replacement as necessary. Item six was to create mini parks on small parcels of town-owned land throughout town. No, no action item date had been placed on that one. So those were the possible action steps that were identified under the town beautification goal.
So the blight bylaw, things like that, who, the Board of Health would have to meet with them and who else would we meet on that?
I would suggest that we also meet with the zoning enforcement officer, our building commissioner, because he'll be key in doing any enforcement that would be related to that. I think if we could have a meeting of that group, perhaps a representative or two of your board to work with Board of Health, some representatives from Board of Health from Bentley, and identify, you know, how do we go about getting samples of existing blight bylaws that might, you know, already be in place in the communities, what's well for them, what hasn't? And then start to, you know, develop our own draft bylaw for consideration by, you know, various different boards and committees, permitting boards and committees that we have here in town.
Okay, so we need to get two people from this board?
I would suggest that.
I can do it.
I'll do it too. And then the identified town buildings, that would be more, would that be like Bentley and Butch maybe, or?
Well, to be quite honest, I think this is something that we would focus more on once we get our facilities manager in place, and that would be, you know, key role for that position.
Okay, good, okay. Roadside cleanup data, I think that's a great idea, I wish, that's something we definitely should know, because we're out here with trash bags on Earth Day.
Trash bags at a dollar a piece, big ones.
A dollar.
We'll make the bags smaller for the same price.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's still an achievable goal, that's very easy to do. And then the roadside, is Butch talked to, uh...
County Chief?
The court, yeah, they are...
Chief, Sheriff.
Sheriff.
I'm not sure if he's talked to Elliot or not, to be honest.
But we can find, send him an email, maybe find out what's going on with that. The street sign replacements, now, is that command of Chapter 90 money?
I'm not sure that they will consider street sign replacement an eligible expense. We'd have to check on that. But this is one of those items that I was discussing with Butch that we could, you know, use an intern from one of the colleges to do the sign inventory?
Okay.
And, you know, develop a prioritized list of sign replacements.
Okay.
Which one was that? Which one were you just...
Number five.
On which one?
Uh, second.
Which call? Sign replacement program through, this is under the beautification.
And then the create mini parks and parcels, that's, uh, probably a little ways in the future, we got to identify the parcels first, I would imagine. Because we don't have that many of them, I don't think.
We don't.
I can only think of two.
I mean, so, I mean, I, over there for a minute, but, so part of the beautification of the town, these are the steps on what we're going to do?
These were the steps that you discussed at the workshop and agreed to try to move forward with.
So then we have to decide how we're going to beautify.
How to move ahead with them.
Okay. Something, I think, I mean, I don't even, really beautifying, just, I don't know, I wish Butch was still here, cutting back some brush on some of these back streets and where you're pulling out, you know, before the winter comes, maybe we should, I think we have to look at that even before we beautify the town, but there's a lot of even some, you go through some back neighborhood roads and there's brush coming into the street, there's a lot of signs blocked.
Corners too, that you can't see.
We're pulling out, yeah, that's all, I don't know, I don't think we can really wait for the beautification, but that could be part of it, but we need to look at it now.
In conjunction with that, do we sweep the roads once a year or twice?
Once.
Like with the leaves and stuff like...
Once unless needed.
Once.
Like all leaves?
Unless there's a problem, leaves we don't pick up.
I don't know, I'm just saying, sweep them off.
Different roads, different years.
Clean them up.
All the roads get done every year.
Oh, yeah, we change it, okay. It's the rotation of the roads getting done that changes when they order.
All right, and the, so that's pretty much it for that part of it. And then the, probably one. Go back to that.
Want to do the video?
I'm sorry.
The next item...
I'm just curious, I'm sorry, I missed the, the survey. Now, that's something I've been asking for a few years, did you already put them in the design?
That's the other item for us to discuss tonight.
Oh, we haven't got to that yet, okay.
So, um, obviously, the key, the key start to that process would be to try to seek feedback from all our various boards and committees and offices in terms of what type of issues are they dealing with that they would like to start to get public feedback on. So, you know, I recommend that we send a letter out to all the different boards and committees and start getting that feedback. It'll be an agenda item at the next staff meeting and start to see what we have there. I already have agreement with Assumption College to provide some assistance by some of their marketing students. They're actually going to make this a class project to work with us to develop the survey. Once we give them the topics, they'll help us develop the actual questions and they'll help the tabulation of results, so.
Do we need two board members?
Yeah, I'd like to be, I'm interested in that.
This one out, okay. Then, uh, let's see. Get the college team, check that out. So once we get that back, then we'll, uh, we'll move on to the next, yeah. Okay.
And that, those were the two goals that you had discussed wanting to get moving ahead on for now, so we can perhaps bring, have discussion about the others in a few months.
Videos ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Just to remind everybody, this is a video for the town that we're going to, where we're going to put them?
Uh, on the town website, so there's already some promotional videos on the town website. They're a little bit dated, so we've updated them. Previously, there was a welcome video, a, I believe, a life in West Boilston, education one, and then an economic development one. We changed the audiences a little bit, so the welcome one is still a welcome one. Now we have an enjoy video, which is basically anyone who's going to be visiting the town in any capacity, and then there's a life video, which includes the educational aspect, but it also includes other parts of living in West Boilston, and then the economic development video audience remain the same. So I'll play the welcome one first.
Now, is the volume up on that?
Oh, I don't know. Yeah, it may be silent.
Yeah.
Just play off the speakers off the laptop? Can you guys hear those beeps?
Yes.
I think that's about as loud as it's going to get. All right.
I don't know, but like I say, the internet connection's not real good tonight for some reason.
It may just be a black video.
You signed both of these?
Yeah.
Welcome to West Boilston, Massachusetts, a charming New England town rich with open space and thriving economy. West Boilston offers recreation, employment, and housing to the surrounding region, all while maintaining its standing as a small town with a big heart. Visit and discover what we are already so proud of.
Okay, and then this is the, anyone visiting the town?
One of West Boilston's most notable assets is its abundance of protected open space. West Boilston is home to the Wachusett Reservoir, which offers a pristine natural setting for wildlife viewing, hiking, fishing, and numerous other outdoor activities. The Central Massachusetts Rail Trail, which currently spans 17 miles through Massachusetts communities, originated here in West Boilston. The rail trail is used year-round and offers walking, running, biking, cross-country skiing, and much more. Outdoor recreation doesn't end there. You and your family can also enjoy golf, basketball, tennis, soccer, and football right here in West Boilston. West Boilston's strong commercial corridor doesn't disappoint. Fresh seafood, produce, and baked goods are all right here. Retail outlets include food, clothing, jewelry, antiques, garden centers, pet supplies, and much more. You can catch a movie, get a massage, and wash a car, all without leaving town. West Boilston's wide variety of quality restaurants suit all tastes. With cuisine from all over the globe and dining options from casual to formal, there is something for everyone. The West Boilston community is one of inclusion. Annual events such as concerts, fireworks, and celebrations draw residents and visitors together to experience life in West Boilston. Organizations such as youth sports, clubs, preservation societies, and environmental organizations all come together to improve West Boilston and connect the community. Getting to and from West Boilston couldn't be more convenient. Several highways and major routes pass through, making all of New England accessible. We are less than five minutes from Worcester and just 45 minutes from Boston, providing easy access to outside cultural assets and employment opportunities. Although you do not need to live in West Boilston to enjoy it, its inviting residential characteristics make it worth mentioning. Housing opportunities include single and multifamily homes, apartments, over-55 housing, and affordable housing for both seniors and families. Municipal utilities provide low rates and local prompt service. Quiet, walkable neighborhoods echo the small-town life that the community embraces. Living is easy here in West Boilston. West Boilston offers education spanning from nursery school to higher learning. The need for variety and instruction is met by both traditional and vocational schooling. West Boilston Public Schools is a uniquely small public school district in Massachusetts, serving students in grades pre-K through 12 in two facilities, Major Edwards Elementary School and West Boilston Middle High School. In the West Boilston Public Schools, we believe that a superb education in a small school atmosphere can make the difference in the life of a student. Caring teachers, lofty academic expectations, a quality curriculum, and excellent instruction are the tools we use to effectively maximize each student's academic potential. Our curriculum is focused on helping students develop critical thinking skills, problem-solving capacity, and effective oral and written communication skills. The mission of the schools is to develop the mind, character, and civic responsibility of each student, and we do so by engaging students in a plethora of activities designed to maximize their opportunities for growth. Academically, West Boilston Middle High Schools offers a 160-credit curriculum for high school students, more credits than any other local high school. We boast a robust internship program and opportunities for juniors and seniors to study at local colleges and universities. In addition, more than 80% of our graduates hold leadership positions during their high school experience, allowing West Boilston graduates to gain admission to highly competitive and elite colleges and universities. Every year, close to 100% of West Boilston graduates go on to study at a college or university. West Boilston students participate in more than 60 school-sponsored clubs and athletic programs that are a source of community pride and participation. Our middle and high school theater arts programs put on three major theatrical productions each year. We offer varsity, JV, and middle school sports teams that have been consistently competitive in Massachusetts interscholastic athletics. West Boilston students participate in Model UN, Worcester County Science Fair, local mathematics competitions, DECA, and a variety of honor societies. West Boilston also values community service and has the distinction of being the first public school to volunteer their services to the Be Like Brick organization in Haiti. All in all, West Boilston Public Schools, like the town it serves, may be small but has a very big heart. Beyond the public school system, West Boilston has both private nursery schools and an institution of higher learning. In the greater Worcester area, 13 colleges and universities offer residents a multitude of options and possibilities in higher education. Housing for every demographic, municipal utilities, small-town life, and incredibly strong academic opportunities make calling West Boilston home an easy choice. West Boilston recognizes the contributions of the business community to the economic stability of the town and consistently prioritizes creating and maintaining...
Looks like it got hung up there.
...town and consistently prioritizes creating and maintaining strong and lasting relationships between town government and the commercial sector.
A town environment, town government environment that's looking to attract businesses, and I think they, they have a mentality, they're looking for the long term, they're just not looking for what they can gain in tax revenue, but they really want to attract business for all the other good benefits that businesses bring to a town like West Boilston.
Conducting business in West Boilston is both affordable and convenient. A single tax rate and a streamlined permitting process are a couple of the main factors that make West Boilston a business-friendly community.
The town government was very supportive of our relocation here. They, they assisted us greatly in applying for tax incentives, which we were able to get approved through the state. They were also very helpful in the planning process of the design of the building, since we had a budding residential areas, they made sure that we and the residents got together to ensure that the building design didn't impact anybody negatively. And then finally, when we did do the building, they were very quick on permitting and approvals.
Our Economic Development Task Force offers project roundtable forums, which unite the building department and town boards to work with your business to expedite and move forward your project.
The town has this great roundtable that introduces new businesses to the process, and we found that to be extremely helpful.
With several highways and major routes passing through West Boilston, all of New England is accessible. West Boilston is less than 45 minutes away from Boston and fewer than five minutes from Worcester, the second most populous city in New England.
We located our business in West Boilston because we were looking for a location that had good ac... We located our business in West Boylston because we were looking for a location that had good access to the highways, as well as commutability for our employees, and an area that was friendly to the business environment, that had lower taxes than some of the other options we had.
Development sites are currently available, and with competitive municipal utility rates, the reasons to relocate or to expand your business in West Boylston are clear.
The officials are wonderful, and we've had a great working relationship with the town, so we really highly recommend the town to West Boylston to anybody who wants to open a business.
Become part of West Boylston's business community and experience what so many other business owners already know: Business is good in West Boylston.
That's it.
That was really good, really good.
Very good.
That's the place of the video that we paid a lot of money for, well, the business paid a lot of money for last time. You did a great job on that, but...
Thank you. So I welcome any feedback or suggestions if...
No, the library didn't make it into the videos.
The library story hour was in the Enjoy West Boylston.
I missed that.
Yeah.
The outside was...
There's some that are like, I think some of the video was a little pixelated, maybe that's why you didn't catch it. I think it was just because of the internet connection, I promise everything I took was in focus.
Yeah, there was a picture of the library and it...
There was also a video of the exterior of the library at the very beginning of the life in West Boylston.
I do have a couple of comments. So in the end of the welcome part of the video, I don't see any of our town logo, our town office, anywhere. So maybe end of the welcome video, maybe you can put one single slide.
The town offices?
Town office, town logo.
The town logo?
Like the seal, the town seal.
Okay.
And the second one is, you know, some of the, it's so easy, I don't think so you will be going, I don't want you to go back and shoot or anything. If you could brighten up the videos at certain parts, like the beginning of the video, welcome part, and also there is one place in the, I think in the, I did watch it in YouTube, so in a high-resolution sense. Some places, the videos are a little lighter side, maybe you can brighten up.
I did get that feedback earlier, and these are the brightened versions. You haven't seen the most recent version.
Oh, this is, you did brighten up?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And the other one comment is, can we, I don't know whether we could give a title of the videos a little bit different than Enjoy. What am I enjoying there? You know, what am I really looking into Enjoy in that part of the video? Again, life. What do I really like in that? You know, maybe giving it to the, in that section, you know, we are talking about the life in West Boylston. You are also talking about housing, you are asking about the utilities and education. So maybe instead of just a life, can we make it a little bigger title? So when the people goes in, you know, so it gives them a more, say, you know, I want to see the housing in West Boylston. How it, you know, I know that, you know, you are going to put it in four different videos, four different smaller segments, not all and everything in one. So when I want to see housing, instead of looking for every single video and clicking everything, so if the title says Housing, then it's so easy for me to go click on the housing part of the video. That's something, you know, you can consider.
Okay.
Yeah, so the welcome one is 24 seconds, so that's just gonna be something that might be on the main page.
Right, just very similar to what is already on there now. Like on the main, the video on the town website right now, there's a little welcome that's like...
So is that where the, is that where you're thinking something to do with the town seal?
Logo.
The welcome one?
Yeah, the initial one, that was the impression I got.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought, okay. And then the other one, the Enjoy...
So instead of giving Enjoy, can we give it what the video talks...
Well, whatever you want to title it is, you know, there's no actual title, those are just what I named them, so I don't...
When she puts them on the page, she can put underneath, Enjoy the Town of West Boylston, and then she can list what's in it.
I just gave them file names, that's all it is.
You know, if you are looking at this, Enjoy means, you know, I have nothing.
Right, this was just so we can see it. I think when she puts it on the page, you can put Life in West Boylston, and then she can put a sentence about what's in the video.
Yeah, absolutely. I just gave them titles, just file names.
Do you think the school part of the video is a little longer?
I think it's, it drags a little.
It loses the interest, it's a little long.
Did you, I think you must agree, it's three, it's almost four minutes.
Four minutes, four minutes.
Yes. It's a little long.
Okay.
I didn't really have a lot of wiggle room there.
I think, I don't know, I just, that's my thought. The other ones I thought were great, but I just thought...
Yeah, if I had, if I had complete creative control, I would make some changes, but I do not, so that's what that is. Was that given to you from, oh, sorry, Mr. Jim, I can't... That was a script that was given to me, yes, from the school, correct. And the one that we have now, is it as long?
Oh, good, none of them are this long. The current one and not...
No, no, no.
They're about...
No.
Probably, the whole thing's probably two minutes total, or something like that, two and a half minutes maybe.
Is there a text over on this video?
I'm sorry, what?
I, when I watch it on YouTube, I can put the text over, I can, I can send it back.
You mean like closed captioning?
Closed captioning, is it on it?
I did not put closed captioning on it, no, but I'm sure it could be done.
That'll be something, I don't know, there'll be something useful to... If someone with a hearing problem, you know, they could hear, they could read the text.
Oh, okay.
So is this something that the PEG Board is still working on, is this anything?
Is this, this is the finished product, or this is...
I can still make changes if you want changes, yeah. If you wanted changes to the school portion...
So in reality, the one called Life is pretty much all school, right? Are 80...
I would say like two-thirds of it is school.
Yeah. So I think that one could probably be possibly renamed to...
Well, no, there's housing in there, utilities. There's all the aspects, you know, our goal was to hit all the aspects of living in West Boylston.
But I'll say...
I wrote all of the script except for the school.
Kind of forget about that because it's the one portion of it.
School gets two-thirds of the budget, they might as well get two-thirds.
66% of the video?
The school part of the video is like four minutes.
Right.
No, the whole, yeah, it's three, there were that school and everything else that are on there.
It's not just the schools, it's the other part of it.
But I think after about, I'm looking at it now, after a few seconds, it starts. Less than a, less than a half a minute, it starts the school.
Okay.
I think overall I did a great job.
The economic development.
Really impressed, yeah, economic development was really good. I think maybe with the few changes that the board recommended and just go change those little things and...
Yeah.
Unless anybody else has any recommendations?
I liked that the business owners, you know, Curtis and...
They both did a great job.
Coming up and saying, hey...
Yeah, they were really, they were really accommodating and, you know, obviously they were doing us a favor, so I was very thankful for their help.
I think this is, is it, all the videos are from the town?
Yeah, you didn't, you didn't...
No, the footage, yes, all of the footage is from West Boylston.
This is nothing like the...
The last one, we had Canada and everything else in it.
Everything was clipped out and...
People swimming in the river.
The water ski, that's what they were doing.
We pulled that, we pushed that, we pulled that out, when they were water skiing.
That's what the original one was. All right, anybody else have any questions?
No, this is great, thank you.
Thank you so much, really did a great job.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Eric. Uh, let's see. Review chapter land report from Board of Assessors. Everybody has a copy of it, it's somewhere in here.
It's in the packet.
So, I need a, 61 and 61A, are they both the same tax rate? I know some...
I believe they are all the same. We have three different categories. We have the 61, which is forestry, we've got 61A, which is the agricultural, horticultural, and then we have a 61B, which is recreational land.
Okay. This is, this is a list of all the properties that are in town that are owned by individuals?
Right, so as of this updated list for 2019, under the 61 forestry, we have 221.35 acres under the 61 forestry categorization. For chapter 61A, agricultural, horticultural, we have 312.76 acres, and under 61B, recreational, we have 235.41 acres. So total chapter land in town is 769.52 acres. This is put together annually by the Board of Assessors.
Great. Any questions on it? Any other questions? Thank you so much for that. Uh, okay. Consider voting to approve exception from 20B conflict of interest for Timothy Shea. Tim?
So we, you know, as you know, occasionally we do get requests from different employees or town officials asking to receive approval by the Board of Selectmen to have an exemption under the conflict of interest law, which would allow them to work a second position within the town. So in this first situation, Tim Shea is a longstanding employee of the DPW, and what he would like to do is to receive approval for the 20B exemption that would allow him to also work as a coach for football at the high school. And this would be for hours worked outside of what he would normally work with DPW. So in order for him to be able to do this and meet the requirements of the conflict of interest law, he needs your approval with this 20B exemption.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we have similar situation for another town employee, Kevin Key, superintendent for the cemeteries. He would also like to have the ability to work for DPW for snow plowing on an as-needed basis. Again, this would be hours worked outside of his normal hours scheduled for cemetery.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, consider approving hiring of Trevor Dillman for a position of production assistant at WBPA TV, grade two, step two, 1475 per hour.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, let's see. In corners which, Master General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A and a half, considering the acceptance of three large flat-screen televisions donated by the town of, to the town by Walmart for use at a news police station, and I know Raj and Nancy went to the, they just remodeled the store at Walmart, they went to the grand reopening, and it's a great job, and we wish to thank the town of, I mean, thank Walmart very much for this generous donation.
What's half an A?
Huh?
What's half of an A? No, wherever the three widescreen TVs going.
That's what it says.
I know, it does, it's going to the police station. Is that where they're gonna go to?
Going to the police station, there's several different meeting rooms and the chief's office, I believe.
Chief's getting the, he's getting the real big screen.
65-inch TV, you know.
The 365-inch TV.
65-inch TV, yeah.
Do we need a motion to accept these? All right, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, consider approving the hiring custodian for the police department effective November 2nd, 2017, as step three, grade one, 1462 per hour.
So moved?
Second.
And this is the chief's...
The custodian for the police station.
And he was a long, long, longtime employee of the school department.
He has years of experience working as a custodian in the school system.
Yeah, I met him there before the grand opening. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just wondering if it's within the budget that we've already put for, or is this, okay, it's just important for the town to know that we've already taken care of it. That's all right. I get you.
And this, and this, yeah. Hi.
Hi.
But we all know that we need to move forward with some type of facility person. And I know we're looking at that, but we don't expect, we don't expect this gentleman to run all the equipment in that building.
No, this is purely the basic custodial duties.
Right, and I'm sure he can do some of this stuff, but I know we are looking at it.
The facility manager that we've been talking about hiring, which will be building into the budget for FY19.
Yeah.
So that, we're actually developing the job description for personnel board review and approval, and then we will then establish the grade, and that will be built into the FY19 budget.
And how many hours will he be?
This position, I believe, is 18 hours a week.
18 hours. Okay.
If he retired from town of West Boylston, he can work that many hours even?
Yes, there are limitations within the retirement system as to how many hours per year he can work this, also dollar value limitations, and this will fit into that.
All right, old business, considering approving the hiring of Brittany Blaney for the position of access coordinator effective October 19th, 2017, at a rate of 1750 per hour.
We have, I would ask to pass over that, we have not had a chance to meet the PEG Board, okay, guys?
Thank you. Fifth update, pool of invoices, K O and Brenner can invoice number 5626, Senior Center, $24,275.
So moved? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
General update, the police station is done, and we had the great open house Saturday, and welcome, thank you to everybody that came, and great to, thank you. Senior Center?
They're not moving in?
They're moving in, starting this week until next week. I think he said the eighth they're gonna be in.
I haven't heard a firm date for finally moving in, but I do know they've lined up the moving company.
Yeah, it's a few, a few locations, but they're gonna try for this. And Senior Center, we will, any update on that? The drawings and...
Yeah, we'll have the next meeting, we'll have information on that.
Okay. So next meeting, we'll have more information on the Senior Center?
And residents can go, I think they just put pictures of the open house in the police station on the town's website, so if you want to go there, you can see some, the ribbon cutting and things like that.
All right, meetings, invitations, announcements, the town has maintained an A-plus, double-A-plus rating from S&amp;P. November 7th, 6:30 PM, special board workshop with ABM for cost savings, that's the ESCO project. November 8th, 6:40 PM, special board meeting for the final vote and signage of the lodge permanent borrowing at the town hall, for the town hall and police station. November 8th, 7:00 PM, fifth meeting, and the public's welcome list for the Senior Center. November 10th, 9:00 AM, Veterans Day breakfast at the Council on Aging. Future agenda items, this one's...
I'm fine at this time, thank you.
I have a couple of things.
Maybe this could be the future agenda items are the town administration could explore some more. So thanks to the DPW, they did close the, through traffic through the Newton Street, so that's a good thing.
The police, I think the police...
Until the, until the construction is done, so nobody complained after that. So we do have an, you know, we have a good reputation from the water department, electric, but personally, you know, I do have a problem with the charter. So I do know that everyone has to call the company, Charter. Charter has then, if not exclusive, they are the only providers in our town. Charter does have a contract with our town. So, yes, yeah. I think, you know, that their service compared to any other service in the town, everyone knows it, it's not up to the standard. So maybe, you know, I would, you to explore some more or talk to some of those contacts in the charter, cable, internet, to make them to... I think, you know, people are calling, I did call, so it's a temporary fix. My internet goes off all the time. So it's a very temporary fix, so unless the town involves, they may listen, or they may not listen. I don't know what are the solutions we can make.
Charter follows very rigidly the federal mandates in terms of how you determine quality of service for cable television. We, I think it's an important distinction to make that the license that Charter has with the town is only for cable TV. Federal government does not allow us to have any role in the provision of internet services or phone services. So the only thing that we have any relationship with Charter on is for cable TV alone. So that if people are experiencing problems with cable TV, they should definitely call into the service number for Charter. But if they do not receive satisfactory results for that, people should feel free to call me, and I will make, then call the government rep and try to expedite getting something done. But, you know, certainly I will, I will call that government rep and find out, you know, what are they experiencing for the number of calls for service for the cable? And if needed, we can ask him to come in and meet with the selectmen. It's a number of years away before we have to start consideration of renewing that license. But it doesn't mean that we can't have an ongoing conversation with them.
Yeah, I think that's a good thing. So, you know, I think, you know, you would agree with me. Nobody complains about electric department.
No.
Nobody complains about DPW's snow plowing. You know, it's one of the best snow plowing in the, around the town. So I think, you know, maybe if you could make enough, call them or if you could contact them, it could be a little different. So people are calling. I did call. It's a temporary fix, but it goes back again.
I know we're gonna bring this up for another, for a future meeting, but just so the residents know, when we sit down and negotiate with Charter, there's not five cable companies in the room, and we get to pick the one. We would love to do that, but that's not how it works.
Correct.
Charter sits in the room, they tell us what they're gonna give us, and we need to either take it or don't have cable in town. There's no options. I just, if we can maybe, when we discuss this in the future, we can let the residents know that's how it works.
We can be, you know, when it comes time, when it's appropriate, we can explain to our residents what we actually have control over under that license. And it's really just the fees, the revenue that's coming into the town that we have any control over. Everything else is dictated by federal law.
Correct. It's just so, I mean, so we know that. It's very, yeah.
It's frustrating for everybody.
I mean, so.
Okay.
And the last one is speeding in several different streets, like Maple, Worcester Street, Temple Street, Laurel Street.
Ozma.
So Ozma?
Sure.
Why are you speeding there?
They fly down there all the time.
Lee Street is pretty bad, too.
I guess in general.
So maybe now the, we have a new police station, maybe. It's about the time.
I just wanna piggyback on what Raj said. If you go on Facebook, you'll find seventy people that are complaining about their internet connection. Useless, does nothing. Complain all you want, you're not gonna get anything out of that. You have to pick up the phone and call Charter and complain to them, or you're wasting your time. Just like all the people that complain on Facebook that don't come to town meeting and vote. That's nice that you're complaining on Facebook, but that's not gonna get things changed. You have to, you have to go to the right people and do the right thing, whether it's come to town meeting and vote for things you believe in, or call Charter, not just complain on Facebook, because that's not gonna get you anywhere.
And to add your point is, the town has a contract with Charter. It's a non-exclusive contract. So if another company wants to come in, another company wants to provide cable or internet, they are most welcome, but no one is interested.
Nobody will, they have, they have a bridge between each other, and that will not happen.
It's not like the town wanted to have the contract with only Charter.
That's why we can go all the way.
That's all. Thank you.
All right. Any questions?
Um, I know that if you can just give us an update, maybe at the next meeting, in regards to the policy on the cable and the website, the internet, things like that.
Yes, that's on the agenda for the fifteenth.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Make a motion to second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Chris, you hear from the scout? Chris, do you hear from the U.S. Scout?